And welcome to the East Hampton School Committee meeting. This meeting this evening is being recorded by East Hampton Public Access Cable. And the school committee would like to recognize and thank the following volunteer, Tim, for taping us tonight. And of course, for those of you who are at home, this is a hot issue on TV. We know that it gets a lot of hits, so you will want to keep it on your save list. That was the attempt at a little humor this morning, this evening. If any of you are interested in helping public access cable stations, channels five, nineteen, and twenty, I can give you a number. You are to call Kathy at (413) 203-1360. And they're always happy to welcome volunteers. So at this point, let's see if we have any announcements.
I do.
Let's see, am I going to let you announce first?
Yes, you go first.
Okay. The next school committee meetings are May 28th and June 18th, 2013. White Brook Middle School Spring Concert is Thursday, May 23rd. There's a half day of school on Friday, May 24th, due to Teacher Professional Development Day. There is no school Monday, May 27th, due to Memorial Day. Center Pepin All-School Show is at 9:30 a.m. on May 29th and 30th. White Brook Middle School Washington, D.C. trip is Wednesday through Friday, May 29th through 31st. Center Pepin Fourth Grade Visit to White Brook Middle School is May 31st. Senior Banquet and Harbor Cruise is Friday, May 31st. Center Pepin Book Fair is June 3rd through 6th. Senior Outing is Monday, June 3rd, at High Meadows in Granby, Connecticut. White Brook Middle School Enrichment Night is Monday, June 3rd. Senior Class Night is Wednesday, June 5th. Elementary Ice Cream Social, Art Show, and Book Fair is June 6th. 2013 Graduation is Friday, June 7th, at 7:00 p.m. White Brook Middle School Awards Night is Wednesday, June 12th. Center Pepin Field Day is June 21st. White Brook Middle School Eighth Grade Continuation is scheduled for the last day of school. And the last day of school is Wednesday, June 26th, which is a half day for students.
All right. Thank you Superintendent Folesby. I also have one announcement. Several weeks ago, I'm not exactly, I'm not remembering the exact date, but there was a special meeting held called Joint Convention, which was a meeting of the City Council and the school committee. And the purpose of that meeting was to hear candidates who were applying for the open position that was vacant on the school committee. There were six candidates that were heard that evening. And then the joint committee voted on the candidate that they would like to see receive the position. Perhaps all of you know by this point in time that Laura Scott is our new member of the school committee. But it appears that at that joint convention, we did not take an open vote. And the open meeting law requires that all votes are taken publicly, presented publicly. So this, I think at the last city council meeting, those members of the city council that were present at the joint convention announced who they had voted for that evening. And tonight, the members of the school committee who were able to be present at that joint convention will announce their candidates, who they voted for that evening.
Lois Levin.
I was not present.
Laura Scott. Laura Scott. And our two members that are not here this evening have sent their open vote. Mayor Mike announces that he voted for Wendy Blumenthal. And Peter Gunn, who was not able to be here tonight, announces that he voted for Laura Scott. So I think that fulfills our requirement. Thank you. Correspondents?
Correspondents, we received several letters from concerned teachers and parents regarding a proposed new model of providing social, emotional, and behavioral services. And tonight Superintendent Folesby and Ann Knapp are giving a presentation tonight to address those issues. We also received notification of a scholarship opportunity from MASC. We received notification from the City Clerk's Office regarding deadlines and signature requirements for elected positions. All of our positions and the mayor's positions, city councilor's positions are all open free election this year. And nomination papers can be taken out beginning July 1st for anybody who would like to run for any of those positions. And we received letters from high school community members expressing their wishes to have the high school library named after Charles and Dorothea Rocky. And these letters will be taken under consideration by the naming subcommittee of the school committee. And we received wonderful news that Taylor Gattman, a senior at East Hampton High School, was accepted to Harvard, excuse me, Harvard University Secondary School Program this summer, where she'll be taking a world history course for college credit. So congratulations, Taylor.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any gifts?
Yes, we do.
Yes. Please vote to accept with gratitude and appreciation the following gifts. $50 from Taylor Agency for EHS Mr. East Hampton. $250 from David Boyle for EHS We the People. And the following for supporting the White Brook Middle School Dine Out East Hampton Fundraising Event, which raised a total of $1,540. Papa George Pizza, Tavern on the Hill, Glory of India, East Hampton Village Pizza, East Hampton Diner, Apollo Grill, Riff's Joint.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. At this time on our agenda, we have allotted a public speak time. That is a public speak time for issues that are not on the agenda. If you are here to speak on an issue that is, that you know to be on the agenda tonight, this is not your chance. That will come later. But are there any of you that would like to speak on an issue that is not included on our agenda this evening? Yes ma'am, would you come to the podium and give us your name and tell me what issue you are wishing to speak on?
My name is Margaret Potts. I'm a teacher at Maple. And I just wish to ask that it's possible, I wasn't here for the vote of the agenda. I don't know if you've actually taken the vote on the set agenda yet. But I know that many people are here to speak to the issue of the school adjustment counselor. And I know that there's some children in the room. And I was wondering if there could be an agenda change, because when I looked online, it looked like it was at the very end of the agenda. And if it was possible to do a switch and address those issues at the beginning of the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Nancy, did you wish to, what did you just say?
I was, I just said that we can do that at the beginning of my report, but we do need to allow John Roper, who's come to us from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, to do his presentation to us on the district review, because he was allotted this time and was planning on this. So I think we have a few other reports before, no, we don't. We're ready for John.
Well, yes, we are. We're ready for Mr. Roper. But thank you for that suggestion.
Okay. Mr. Roper, would you like to come forward? And I think we've got you ready to go.
Thank you very much. And I promise I'll be brief. Really will. Madam Chair, ladies of the school committee, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for inviting me to join you this evening. I'm going to tell you a little bit about our district review process and what the district review team will be looking at when they come to visit you 10th of June, I believe it is. So we'll miss the seniors, however, but I did notice.
We can bring them back.
I don't think so.
I love school.
The district review, it's supposed to be a helpful, helpful experience. Excuse me. It's an analysis of what's going on. It's a third party, an external analysis of what's going on. It's not intended to replace the kinds of things that you folks do every day. It's not that kind of a review. But it is the kind of thing that we hope to be able to provide you with an alternative look at what's happening. How your efforts towards improving education here for the kids is being seen by an outsider, a disinterested third party. We hope to be able to offer you some recommendations. The best part about our recommendations is that you are free to ignore them if you choose, because they are just that. They are just recommendations based on things that we find during our review. The way we basically will organize our time is to use something that we call district standards. They're part of the district system of support. So it's not simply an accountability visit. It's the first part of a district support visit. So we're going to look at six standards. The first standard is leadership and governance. The second one is curriculum and instruction. The third one is assessment, both student assessment and program assessments. We will look at human resources and professional development. We'll look at student support. And we'll look at finance and asset management. We will look at all of those things in the context of what we call the conditions for school effectiveness. We'll kind of use those, those standards as organizational areas around which we'll ask questions for folks in the district. We hope to be able to learn a lot about what you folks do every day. Please feel free, if you'd like to, if you have questions at any point, just give me a yell and I'll be happy to go along with what you need to have. The components of this review start with independent, experienced, expert reviewers. The folks that we have working for us work in accountability. They are generally speaking, people who have completed distinguished services in schools across Massachusetts, mostly, although we have some other states represented as well. There are people who do this accountability work, not only here in Massachusetts, but in other states, and in some cases, other countries as well. There are people who have been trained, mostly by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and the people who do this repeatedly for us. It's a fair and transparent process, at least we hope it is, because we spend a lot of time making sure that the district has all of the same information that we use to train district review members. You have a copy of our protocol. It's posted online on the department's website. We use the same protocol to train our people and to make these kinds of presentations to districts. It's data-driven and it's evidence-driven. And it's an iterative process, which means, and I usually apologize for this before we start, we ask the same questions to different people so that we get information that we are fairly sure is accurate. One person, two people even, can have inaccurate information, just not know the answer. But if you've heard it from several people, the odds are very good that, that your information is at least as accurate as it can possibly be. We hope that the findings will be informative to you, and we hope that the recommendations will be helpful. Without informative findings and helpful recommendations, the whole process doesn't seem to hold much water. So we're going to try to make this as, as useful to you folks as we possibly can. There are a number of parts to this process. Kind of go over each one of them briefly, just to kind of give you an idea of where everything happens. The first part is the data and document analysis. And that generally happens two days the week before the district review. We bring all of the team members in to Malden. We go through all of the documents that we've asked the district to provide, and all of the documents that the district routinely provides to the department every year. Superintendent Folesby and the staff will attest to the fact that the department routinely asks for lots and lots of information. We apologize for that, but the public gets to know all of these things. So what we will try to do is make use of the stuff that you have already sent us so that we're not bothering you to do it again. And we want the folks on the teams to be able to have a good idea of how things work here in, in East Hampton before they actually come on site. We would like them to have informed questions. We would like them to know, at least in general, what to ask about when they come. The six standards and the 24 indicators and the district standards and indicators will serve as buckets of information for us to collect our information in. The team looks at data analysis. We will share with you the packet of data that the team looks at. The team will look at all different kinds of documents that have been submitted. And we promise that if you want to send us anything else that we haven't asked for, we will look at that too. We try not to ask you for too much upfront, but we do want you to know that we will look at anything you want us to see. We're hoping to be able to tell the story of the East Hampton Public Schools in a way that probably you can't. I was a teacher for many, many years. I was a principal for many years. And in all of that time, it never failed to amaze me how very often the kids would go home from school, mom or dad would say, "How did everything go?" And the answer would be, "Great. Good day today." And that's all you'd hear. But there's more to it than that. And there are things that happen, and there are things that cause other things to happen. And that's what we look for in the review, and that's what we try to tell the public. The onsite visit is the most visible part of what we do, not necessarily the most important, but the most visible. We'll be here for four days. We will come in and start with an introductory meeting, so we speak to pretty much anyone that you would like to have in the room, to just kind of introduce the team members, give a little bit about their background. And then one of the important things that we will do is we will listen to you. We will ask you, what kinds of things do you want our team to focus on? Now, we're coming in with a lot of questions already, based on the data that we have looked at in Malden. However, there are different ways to ask questions, and there are different things you want to find out. So we'll ask you, is there something you particularly like the team to look at? This is a rare opportunity for someone to have six people who are former principals, superintendents, business managers, curriculum coordinators, ESL directors, folks who have served well for many years, at no expense to the district, to come in and take a look at the kinds of systems that you have in place, and give you an idea of how effective they may be compared to other districts in Massachusetts. I mean, very often we look at things and we think, "Yeah, I'm doing a pretty good job with this." Well, a pretty good job could be anything from, well, it's getting the job done minimally, all the way up to, "This is the best thing that we've seen in Massachusetts in the last three months, three years, five years." So we kind of have that, that, that point of view. We have the chance to look at many different districts and kind of get a bird's eye picture of where everything is, so we can help you with that too. We will look at, we will invite school committee members to speak with the team. You don't have to, but would love to have you answer some questions for us. We will ask the district leaders, the school leaders for interviews. We'll ask the teachers' union to answer some questions for us. We'll invite parents to come to a focus group. We will invite teachers to come to a focus group. Any teacher in the district is welcome to join us and chat with the committee. You don't have to have any kind of preparation. One of the things that we will be doing is kind of comparing information, not to make sure that everyone is telling the truth. Those days have passed. But what we will be doing is asking questions to different groups of people to see where the information gets to. Do the teachers know all of the district kinds of activities? And if not, which ones do they not know, and should they know those? So that's one of the reasons that we do some of those kinds of things. We will ask for a focus group with municipal officials, the mayor perhaps, or someone from the finance committee. We will spend some time with the team, talking together. We will make sure that everyone on the team knows what everyone else on the team has learned so far. And then we'll have a closing meeting. We'll invite to the closing meeting the regional assistance director, and we will go directly from the accountability review right into department assistance. So anything that, that the team thinks might be a good point for the district to look at, to count, to consider doing, we'll start right there and then, with whatever assistance the department can provide to you. It's important for us to mention that one of the ways we gather our information is by looking at policies, processes, practices, and outcomes. This is a very standards-based systems kind of analysis. And we'll do that by gathering information from documents, from interviews, and from data. All of those we'll look at from the school, the district, and the classroom point of view. The intention here is to make sure that the information that we get is as accurate as we possibly can when it comes time to findings, recommendations. This is a four-day process that starts us out with sorting through the evidence, coming to consensus on findings. And the consensus process is much stronger, we think, than actually calling for votes. You actually have to get a room with six experts to agree on what they saw. That's not all that easy very often. This is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It's not very easy for us even to agree on what time lunch is in many cases. However, we're going to try to make sure that the team all agrees on what they've seen. And then we'll work to develop priority findings. There will be somewhere between six and 18 of those, just to make sure that it's a manageable number for you to consider. And then we'll develop preliminary recommendations from that. The next step is refining the draft. We'll look at all of the findings and recommendations. Our lead editor is a former practicing attorney, former parent council member, and a person whose evidence standard is very impressive. So if someone on the team writes down, "Interviewers said that," she will make sure that there is evidence in the notes from all of those interviews to make sure that that actually was said. These are people who work as consultants to the department, but the department feels that we have a very strong obligation to make sure that everything they say is accurate and reflects perfectly, as well as humanly possible, the things that they heard while they were here in the district. If you wish, when we're done, we'll offer you two additional things. Well, one of them is a chance to make absolutely certain that our findings are accurate. We'll send a draft of just the findings to Superintendent Folesby. We'll ask her to review it for factual correctness. Pretty much every district in Massachusetts has a, a number of programs that they identify with acronyms. And sometimes the acronyms are a little quick, as far as our folks. In fact, sometimes the acronyms are so well-known in the district that when you ask, "And what does Project Lead stand for?", the folks that we're asking might not even know. So that's one of the things we ask to make sure happens. We want to have that act as correct as we possibly can as well. The recommendations that, that come from this will be things that are designed to not be prescriptive, but to be descriptive. There will be things in there like, "The district should carefully reconsider this," or "Should consider continuing its efforts too." There'll be a lot of things that, that give you an opportunity to think about what the team members saw and how it works with you. There are no right answers. We have determined that years ago. There are lots of things that work some places, but not others. And you are the best ones to come up with that answer as to how it works. But we will try our best to make sure that you have some options to think about. Finally, the report will be published. I said earlier that there'll be a couple of things that we offer you. One is a report out to the committee. When the report is completed, we will be happy to come back and tell you what it says and where it fits in terms of other districts across Massachusetts. The other thing that we'll offer, and this is your choice as well, is what we call a next steps meeting, or a prioritization meeting, where we will come back and we'll help the district leader team, leadership team, look at the findings and the recommendations, decide what, if anything, they wish to pursue, and which ones are the highest payback. So an opportunity to make use of some other outside brain power, if you will. The report will be published on the department website. And you folks will certainly have copies of it before it gets published. So at that point, I think we will have completed our assistance with you folks. And I will turn you over to the targeted assistance people in the department to provide any additional resources that we can do that for you. Does anyone have any questions?
I just have one, Mr. Roper. You have given us a pretty accurate rundown or outline as to how these four days are going to flow. When do you expect the final recommendation to be published?
Our recommendations this year have been six to 10 weeks.
Okay.
Between the actual review. So probably by the beginning of school next year, you'll have.
Excellent.
It has in the past taken us much longer, so we've had to cut things back. You will, your findings and recommendations will be bullet points.
Okay.
Your findings and recommendations will be bullet points. There will be less text, less flowery language. They're quicker for us to write, and frankly, quicker for you to work with, too. Those will be, the report is much smaller than it used to be. It used to be, at one point, it were 100 and something pages long. This one will be more likely 20 pages tops. So we're doing the best we can to get them to you while they're still fresh and while the recommendations are still actionable.
Okay. Any other questions? John, can I just ask, what is your role in our review? Will you be here on-site for those four days, or are you...
I hope to be here, at least for a day. My role is to, well, I work with the department to try to make this process a little easier for districts. I have never met a superintendent who sits with his or her feet up on the desk for much time during the day. I occasionally call them and say, "Hi, are you finished with your nap yet?" And I generally get a desired reaction from that. But one of the things we do try to do is make this as minimally intrusive as we can. So that's a big piece of my role. But the other part is to supervise the teams and to make sure that what the department has said we will do, that the team will in fact do. We want to be making sure that their service, both to the district and to the Commonwealth, is exactly the way it's advertised. So I will be here. I'll be sitting in on interviews. I will be holding private meetings with people who are asking the questions and helping to improve the process, I hope. We will also, by the way, send you a link to a survey when we're done, and we'll ask Superintendent Follonsby to send it to the school committee members, to people who participated in the interviews, so that we can get some additional feedback from you and maybe improve the process a little bit more.
Okay. John, I just have one question. Do you know at this point who the evaluators will be for our district? Or will you let us know ahead of time who they are?
You will, not only will you know ahead of time, but you will have their biographies and their pictures, so that you will have an opportunity to get back to me and say, "Not this one. I know this one from..." So I put pictures in because people's names change from time to time. So we will have that for you in advance. I would say, yes, I do know them. However, this afternoon, a group changed, so I'm not sure which people will be actually coming here. We will now have two reviews going on the same week, so... But that also makes it easier. If you want to challenge any review team member, I'll just move them from one team to the other and know they're already available and ready to go, so...
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
I look forward to seeing you in June.
I appreciate your time, and I appreciate the opportunity to bring the process to you, and I hope we can have a wonderfully productive and helpful district review.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't forget your flash drive.
We were scheduled to have a presentation by Ms. Nancy Dunn at this time for SAD, but she's unable to make it this evening. So let's get to our subcommittee reports. Finance?
So finance, we have a meeting scheduled for May 21st at 7:00 P.M.
Okay. May 21st. Policy?
We have three new, three first readings of new policies tonight. The first one is the GCF professional staff hiring policy. And Superintendent Follonsby recommended adoption of this new policy to provide guidelines for the process of hiring professional staff. Currently, we don't have a policy for this. We do have policies for the creation of positions, job descriptions, salary schedules, and support staff hiring, but not for the process of hiring professional staffs. So a motion to accept the first reading would move this process forward.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All those in favor of the first reading moving forward on this professional staff hiring policy?
Aye.
Opposed?
The next policy is the policy IGD curriculum adoption. Superintendent Follonsby recommended adoption of this new policy to clarify the process of approving new curriculum, including the high school program of studies. We currently do not have a policy addressing curriculum adoption. And just to clarify, the school committee will continue to approve extensive curriculum changes. This new policy confirms the need to inform the school committee of those changes, and that acceptance of those changes is required for adoption.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
So a motion to approve the first reading of policy IGD curriculum adoption.
Second?
I just have a question.
Yes.
When you say extensive, when you talk about extensive changes, I'm just wondering if you could define, for clarity, what is extensive? How do we define that versus something that's not extensive?
I'm going to ask Nancy if she could speak to that.
That's a good question. I think it's when it departs from, you know, what we've currently been doing. If it's a small change in a course or course structure, that would not be extensive. But if we were going to implement something very different from what we currently have in place, that would be an extensive change.
So this year, when we added 20 some-odd new courses to the high school program of studies, would that be considered extensive?
If they were just, you know, additions, other sections of a course, or similar to courses that we have, not necessarily. But if it was a brand-new program that we were bringing into place, then that would be extensive, yes.
So like the robotics?
Like the robotics, yes.
The science/technology classes that have been added?
I think the robotics would be a good example, because that's something that we don't currently have, and we don't have anything like that. So that would be an extensive change.
So that would be something that the school committee would approve?
That's right.
Yes. All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor of accepting the first reading of policy IGD curriculum adoption, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Their policy is policy JBA, student-to-student harassment. Superintendent Follonsby recommended we adopt this new policy, and this is not to be confused with the bully policy that we do have in place. Harassment is a separate issue.
And I just want to mention that, you know, the reason we're adopting a new student-to-student harassment policy and our staff hiring policy is because it now includes gender identity as a means of discrimination. So we want to be sure that we have that in our policy.
Motion to approve the first reading of policy JBA, student-to-student harassment.
Second? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor of first reading of policy JBA, student-to-student harassment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? First reading accepted of all three. Thank you. And Samantha?
My turn.
Yes.
Okay. So we've been really busy at the high school.
I hope.
Obviously. We have a new high school now, so it's really exciting. And this past week and this current week, we've been taking AP tests, so things like chemistry, history is actually this week, statistics, calculus, all that jazz, and everyone's been a little stressed out about that, but we've been managing. The Arts Festival was recently held at the Old Town Hall, and I wasn't able to personally go there, but I heard that there was a lot of great art. Actually, our own Bailey Murphy had a great piece up, and she won a little award for that, so it was awesome. Our band, and our high school band and chorus are having their concert Thursday night in New EHS Auditorium. It is free to come, and we encourage everyone to come, check out our new auditorium, check out our awesome music program that we have here at the high school. And it starts at 7:00 P.M. This Saturday at Forest Park is the Pioneer Valley Heart Walk, and one of our own students, a junior, Sarah Senkowitz, actually has a team going. And so we're really excited to get out there and represent our community and support the American Heart Association. And at the end of the month, seniors have our finals and all of our great events and graduation on June 7th, like Ms. Follonsby said. And we're done. It's awesome. So...
Oh, we're never done.
No, no, we're never done. And we're all going to go to more school, but...
Okay. Bailey and Samantha, will your last school committee meeting be next? Is that...
I believe so.
I think that would make sense, wouldn't it?
Yes.
The next meeting?
I believe so.
All right.
And I just want to mention that I think this is going to be a very exciting graduation, because it's the first graduation in our new high school, so we're very much looking forward to it.
Yes, we are.
Special class here that's graduating this year.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I skipped over the CES update report.
Yes, you did.